Thank you, Troy. I'd like to call to order this land use meeting and public hearing for Tuesday, March 22, 2022. If you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Ingalls, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'll go through the notices very quickly. Item 2A, B, and C, all three items, did not require any specialized notice for today. Item 3 required published and posted notice. That was accomplished on February 17 and February 19, respectively. Item 3B, posted, mailed, and published notice were required. That was February 14, January 14, and February 3, respectively. Item 3C required published and posted notice. That was accomplished February 3 and February 14. Item 3D required published, posted, and mailed notice. That was accomplished February 17, February 15, and February 16, respectively. And finally, item 3E required published notice, which was accomplished on March 10, 2022. With that, you have proper notice and jurisdiction on all items.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls. Do any Commissioners have any disclosures for items on this agenda?
I do not. Thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none. With that, we'll move to item 2, our land use meeting agenda items. We'll start with item 2A, subdivision improvements agreement and intergovernmental agreement for Sterling Ranch. Filing number 6C, Douglas County, project number DV 2021-443. Bradley Jackson presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brett Thomas for Plan Services.
I was going to say, you're not Bradley. You're Brett.
So items 2A and 2B will be presented together, and then separate motions will be necessary, 2A being first, and then 2B.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brett Thomas, Plan Services. Project before you is Sterling Ranch filing 6C, final plat. Project number SB 2021-062. Susan Beckman with Sterling Ranch Development Company is the project representative on behalf of the owner, Sterling Ranch 4 LLC. As part of this presentation, staff will also provide information on the subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement, SIA IGA, for filing 6C. The applicant proposes 236 residential lots, seven tracks, and associated public and private roads on 53.23 acres. The intent of the final plat process is to provide for review of final engineering plans, the subdivision improvement agreement, public dedications, and other legal agreements. The final plat process begins with submission of an application. Following a review period by referral agencies in the public and acceptance of engineered plans, the request is considered by the Board at a public meeting. No public comments were received. All referral agency comments are outlined in the referral agency response report, as well as the referral response letters attached to the staff report. The applicant's response letter to referral comments is also included in the staff report. The site is located in the southeast portion of Sterling Ranch PD, immediately west of Moore Road and north of the Plum Valley Heights subdivision. This is an aerial of the property. The site is bound by Sterling Gulch along the west with platted portions of filing 6A beyond. The site is located south of filing 6B, which was approved by the Board in November of 2021. To the east of Moore Road is the Douglas County Emergency Vehicles Operations Center, and south of the site is Plum Valley Heights subdivision, which consists of approximately 4.75 acre lots. The site was rezoned to plan development with approval of the Sterling Ranch PD by the Board of County Commissioners in 2013. Associated with the approval of the Sterling Ranch PD, the Board also approved the Sterling Ranch water supply standards appeal for certain provisions to Section 18A of the zoning resolution. The appeal established alternate minimum water demand standards and alternate water supply documentation standards for the Sterling Ranch PD. In June of 2021, the Board reviewed and approved Preliminary Plan 6, consisting of 700 residential lots, six super block lots, 51 tracks, and associated public roads and private drives, of which this site is a part. Filing 6C is the third final plat proposed within Preliminary Plan 6. This slide is an overview of the final plat exhibit. The applicant proposes 236 residential lots and seven tracks. As required per the PD, the three perimeter lots along the southern boundary of the project are a minimum of 2.3 acres in size to provide an appropriate transition and buffer to the existing large residential lots within Plum Valley Heights. These are the approval standards applicable to a final plat. In addition, the water appeal approval standards apply to this application. A detailed assessment of project's compliance with all standards is included in the staff report. All engineered plans, studies, and reports required for filing 6C have been reviewed and approved by engineering. Staff has evaluated the final plat request in accordance with Article 5 of the subdivision resolution. Required improvements are identified and secured through the SIA IGA for filing 6C. Action on proposed condition number 1 is required prior to action on the final plat. Condition number 1, prior to the Board's action on the final plat, the subdivision improvements agreement, intergovernmental agreement for filing 6C shall be approved by the Board. Condition number 2, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment in the amount of $1,500 per single-family dwelling unit to the Douglas County School District for capital mitigation. For multifamily dwelling units within the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment in the amount of $750 per unit to the Douglas County School District for capital mitigation prior to site improvement plan approval. Condition number 3, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide payment to Douglas County for the pro-rata share costs towards improvements to the state highway system in accordance with commitments set forth in the Sterling Ranch PD. Staff would like to clarify language for proposed condition number 4 in the staff report. Reference the Waterton Second Amendment to the Waterton Boulevard Infrastructure Development Agreement. That is being clarified to state... So, proposed condition number 4 will read, "Prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall complete the Moore Road Infrastructure Development Agreement for the expansion of Moore Road." And then, condition number 5, "Prior to recordation of the final plat, the necessary easements for Waterton Road shall be recorded with copies furnished to Douglas County for construction of the Waterton Road project." Condition number 6, "Prior to recordation of the final plat, the private telecommunication easement shall be recorded and reception numbers noted on the final plat exhibit." Condition number 7, "Colorado Division of Wildlife Literature shall be made available to both prospective homeowners and homebuyers concerning the possible presence of wildlife and shall be available at all times." Condition number 8, "A burrowing owl survey shall be performed if any earth movement will begin between March 15 and October 31." And condition number 9, "Prior to recordation of the final plat, technical corrections of the final plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County." And condition number 10, "All commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises." Section 504.06 of the subdivision resolution sets forth parameters for the Board's determination on final plat requests, as noted on this slide. The SIA IGA that accompanies the final plat is a four-party agreement between the county, Sterling Ranch Development Company, Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board, and the Dominion Water and Sanitation District. The purpose of the SIA IGA for Sterling Ranch filing number 6C is to provide for the completion of the streets, traffic facilities, sidewalks, storm drainage infrastructure, water infrastructure, sanitary infrastructure, and off-site improvements. Brad Jackson with Engineering is available to, if you have specific questions regarding the agreement. This concludes presentation on the final plat for Sterling Ranch filing 6C and the SIA IGA. Two motions are necessary from the Board. The first, a motion would be made for the SIA IGA, followed by a second motion on the final plat. Staffs available to take questions at this time. Otherwise, Sterling Ranch and its representatives are here to discuss the request.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions for Brett?
Brett, would you mind going back on the slide to that item number 4, the condition that was changed? So it's just the Moore Road has changed because it says Waterton in the packet, right?
Yeah. The original thought, there's the Waterton Boulevard IDA, and I think the thought was that that would be amended to include Moore Road, but my understanding from Public Works Engineering is that it would be a separate agreement that will be coming forward.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate that.
Further questions for Brett?
Brett, is...So based on everything I'm reading in the packet, this looks to be in accordance with the original PD as well as preliminary Plan 6. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I will reserve my questions following the applicant's presentation. If the applicant would like to come up and provide your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners. Susan Beckman, S-U-S-A-N-B-E-C-K-M-A-N. I'm the entitlement director for Sterling Ranch Development Company, 8155 Piney River Avenue, Suite 200, Littleton, Colorado 80125. I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for your time this afternoon, and I also want to thank the Douglas County Planning Staff, Public Works, and Engineering for their professionalism and hard work on the final plat 6C. I'd like to introduce the Sterling Ranch team. With me today is Brock Smithles, President of Sterling Ranch Development Company; Eric Barney, Director of Engineering, Sterling Ranch Development Company; our Sterling Ranch community here with us today, Andrea Cole, Manager Dominion Water and Sanitation District. Joining us remotely, virtually, is Cameron Richards, General Counsel, Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board. You'll hear me call it CAB for the rest of the presentation; Brian Hart, Professional Engineer, Redlands Consulting; Cassie Slade, Principal, Fox Tuttle Transportation Group; and Curtis Davidson, he's also joining us remotely, is our Senior Landscape Architect from PCS Group. Once again, I'd like to help you catch your bearings. Sterling Ranch is about four miles south from C-470 on Titan Road. So, there's Titan Road, and it's a mile west of Santa Fe on Moore Road. Some other landmarks is Roxboro State Park, Lockheed Martin Complex, and to the north is Chapfield Park. 6C is about in this area, and Plum Valley Heights is just south of that. The yellow line is the boundaries of Sterling Ranch currently, and it's 3,400 acres with an anticipated 1,300 acres of open space and 30 miles of interconnected trails at full buildout. Full buildout for Sterling Ranch will be in 20 years, and it's becoming a great place to live, work, raise a family, and retire. Just to update you so you know how many homes we currently have occupied, we have 1,230 families living in Sterling Ranch, and we have approximately 3,130 home sites and residents that are platted or under development. So that's really exciting. Sterling Ranch was the number-one best-selling master plan community in 2020 and also in As Brett Thomas had mentioned, we're here today for a final plat, and the final plat application is a process pursuant to Article 5 of the subdivision resolution to provide for the review of final engineering plans, the subdivision improvement agreement, public dedications, and other legal agreements, and that's what we're here to do today. 6C complies with the Douglas County subdivision regulations and the 2040 comprehensive plan. As you know, we are in the Chapfield urban area, so this final plat proposes urban development in a designated urban area. It provides appropriate trails and open space, prolongs the life of water. We're really proud in Sterling Ranch that 100% of our current residents are supplied with renewable water, and our commitment at full buildout will be 70% renewable water and 30% groundwater. And of course, we work really hard to foster cooperation with surrounding jurisdictions. We talked a little bit about the preliminary plan earlier. I would like to... Whoop. That's not good. There. I'd like to point out the yellow is preliminary Plan 6, and that was approved last year. 699 residential units and six super block lots. Our preliminary plans are divided into plats. Preliminary Plan 6 has three plats. The 6A was approved last year in August, 228 residents and four super block lots. The red circle is 6B, and that was 236 residential lots, and that was approved last year also. And it also had one super block lot for future commercial, residential, and retail. And then the outline of 6C final plat is right here. It's approximately 53 acres, 7.8 acres of open space, 236 total residential lots, including 134 single-family detached residential units and 102 single-family duplex lots. This is the final plat exhibit. The Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board is responsible for the design and construction of public infrastructure with filing 6C. Moore Road and Waterton Road will be public and dedicated to Douglas County, while the streets will be owned by the county, and private drives and alleyways will also be owned by the Community Authority Board. For water and wastewater, Sterling Ranch filing 6C will be served by the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board, the retail water provider, with an agreement with Dominion Water and Sanitation District, the wholesale water and sewer provider for Sterling Ranch. The water and wastewater delivery supply were approved in preliminary Plan 6, and the state engineer's water letter dated December 2, 2021, in regards to 6C states, "Our opinion is that the water supply is adequate is based on our determination that the amount of water required annually to serve the subdivision is currently physically available." Permanent wastewater treatment services will be provided by Dominion at the Chapfield Basin Water Reclamation Facility with initial waste treatment being provided with a contract with the City of Littleton. Storm sewer infrastructure within the public streets will be owned and maintained by Douglas County, and signed construction documents, technical studies, including construction plans, traffic analysis, drainage reports, and other important documents have been found acceptable to the engineering department and have been approved. As you are aware, the Sterling Ranch plan development has designated character zone compliance requirements, and they really set what we can build and what our density is, and it also really allows us to have a diversity of housing. This is our neighborhood plan for preliminary Plan 6. The blue outlines the final plat 6C. 6C, for the most part, is character zone 3, and that is a neighborhood zone with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. There are also four lots that are 2.3 acre lots and special character zone A. Those are...They're north of Plum Valley Heights to provide a buffer for that neighborhood. There is also, and you can't see it, but there's also a 40-foot greenway multifunctional trail buffer north of Plum Valley Heights. All minimum lot sizes and height requirements for each character zone are being met in filing 6C, and most important, Sterling Ranch is not asking for any additional density. In 6, the preliminary Plan 6, there were 73 acres worth of park and open space and multifunctional open space and community parks that were preserved. And so this light green is our open preserve. This is the Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor. The middle green is multifunctional open space, and the dark green then is our community parks. Almost 10 acres of parkland are preserved in 6C, and it adds some great connectivity to the entire preliminary plan and the neighborhood. I think the most defining amenity is probably this park right here. It's almost an acre park that will have a trail connection through the Sterling Gulch. The Sterling Gulch is at its narrowest 300 feet, and then it will connect to this park on the other side on 6A that's about two acres. So as you can see, it's really very accessible with internal roads and going to be a wonderful amenity for that whole neighborhood and community. As you know, the park and recreational facilities for these community parks will go through a separate location and extent, and so there'll be another process that will go to the Planning Commission for approval. The county requires a traffic impact analysis for every preliminary plan and a supplemental traffic analysis for every plat filing. To understand the internal traffic operations and to look at regional impacts...So once again, you have 6C here. Fox Tuttle, our transportation consultant, updated the traffic study and actually found that within 6C, that final plat only represents 12% of the entire preliminary plan. So even though it has very limited impact on traffic, I would like to just update you briefly on some of the regional road improvements that have happened in and around that area. As you know, there's the Southern Connector. You can't see it. It's off the map. The Southern Connector was a Douglas County project, a great project that allowed for people in this area to get to Highway 85. I know a lot of people travel that and just complement the opportunity to have that shortcut. Rampart Range Road at Waterton Road, there were turn lanes so that people from Rampart Range Road could turn on Waterton Road when it's finished. Waterton Road through an IDA, the county is managing that project. A lot of dirt is being moved. It's very exciting, and the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board authority will be paying for that project. And it really is a game changer for the entire area. Up to 6,000 vehicles will be taken off of Rampart Range Road a day once Waterton Road opens up. So that's a real...For the western part of Sterling Ranch, those communities will have a lot of traffic congestion eased up. And then, of course, the newest project on Moore Road is going to be an additional project that the county and Sterling Ranch will have another intergovernmental development agreement. And actually, that project has already started, and it will be done in, I've heard, three months. It's really a great opportunity. We have always had a lot of community input, especially from Plum Valley, about the need to widen that road, and it's such a great opportunity and partnership that we can move forward with that road. Internally, the study from Fox Tuttle recommended that we have a 2/3, a 3/4 turn on Waterton Road from San Antonio and also a water...a connection to Moore Road from Watercrest Street. I want to make sure I got that street right. Yellow Crest Drive. We have a Watercrest Street and a Yellow Crest Drive. So we have a lot of interconnectivity also, internal networks that will come up from C into filing B to get to Moore Road and filing B to get to Waterton Road. So really good connectivity from filing B and from filing C and B. I'm going to wrap it up here. Final plat may be approved upon the findings that it meets all the approval guidelines. This project complies with the county master plan, Douglas County subdivision regulations, county standards, policies, and guidelines. I would like to enter the next four slides into the record, but I do want to read some of the most important. Filing 50...Filing 6C, 50301, conforms with the goals and objectives of the Douglas County Comprehensive Master Plan. 50302, it addresses the design elements established in Article 4, Section 404. Of course, 40403 provides open space buffers adjacent to major drainage ways. 40405, we work with the natural terrain and preserves existing drainage in areas of vegetation. And 40408, all the signed construction documents, technical studies, and construction plans, et cetera, have been approved. 50303, it conforms with Section 18A, water supply. The water supply for Sterling Ranch filing final plat 6C will be provided by the Sterling Ranch Community Authority Board through an agreement with Dominion Water and Sanitation District. Dominion has signed a commitment to serve letter dated November 5, 2021 of last year, and the Colorado Water Resource Engineer's opinion is the amount of water required annually to serve the subdivision is currently physically available. 50306, filing 6C provides adequate drainage improvements to include stormwater conveyance system to the Sterling Gulch interim pond and unnamed tributary. And 50307, 6C provides adequate transportation improvements that will provide safe travel for all roadway users in Sterling Ranch. And finally, Sterling Ranch is supportive of all the conditions of approval. On behalf of the Sterling Ranch Development Company and the project team, I'd like...want to thank you for your consideration and your time this afternoon. I'd like to ask for your support of the final plat 6C.
Thank you, Ms. Beckman, and I love that photo of the cattle drive. That's fantastic. Any questions for staff or Ms. Beckman?
I have none. Thank you.
And I have none either. With that, I will open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment on either item 2A or 2B of this agenda today? Troy, do we have anyone online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or motion. Oh, and I'm sorry, before we do that, if I could ask the applicant if they would accept all of the 10 conditions as presented?
Commissioner Layden, we will accept all the conditions of approval.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Beckman.
Commissioner Layden, just for the record, after I looked at all of the criteria, I believe that this project does meet the criteria.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the subdivision improvements agreement and intergovernmental agreement for Sterling Ranch filing 6C, project file DV 2021-443.
I'll second.
There's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes.
If it pleases the Board, I have a motion to approve Sterling Ranch filing number 6C with 10 conditions as presented, project file SB 2021-062.
Second.
There's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? I will say that I also reviewed all of the approval criteria of 50301 at SEC, including the comprehensive master plan requirements, and believe that those have been satisfied. Any further discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries. Congratulations.
And Mr. Chair, for the record, Ms. Beckman identified an exhibit she was submitting. Her entire presentation is considered part of the record, so you don't need a separate submittal.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls. And with that, we'll move to item... And with that, we'll move to item 2C, which is the Riada South filing number 1, 7th Amendment, project file SB 2021-059. Matt Jacobaski presenting for staff. And I see Jeanette, are you subbing for Matt today?
I am, indeed.
Okay. Hi, Jeanette.
Yes, filling in for Matt today, Jeanette Baer with Planning Services. This is Riada South filing number 1, 7th Amendment, final plat, project number SB 2021-059. Brian Connolly of Otten Johnson is here on behalf of Betts Lake LLC, the applicant, and the property is currently owned by the Riada South Metropolitan District. The applicant is requesting final plat approval to subdivide a 77-acre site into 34 single-family residential lots and 10 tract lots, range in size from 7,500 to 14,000 square feet. We reviewed the intent of a final plat before, which is largely engineering-driven. The final plat process is, again, outlined here. During this process, staff did receive public comment from one neighbor in the Butterfield community objecting to the request and we did receive some comments from the Pinery HOA. That HOA had no specific concerns with this final plat and was supportive of some of the roadway improvements that are associated with this final plat. They did continue to express concerns with previous PD amendments which removed open space next to their community lying further to the south, not part of this final plat. The site is outlined here in yellow. You can kind of see this squiggly line. It's generally located in the northern portion of Riada South, between Pinery, Pinery Community to the, to the south and then Hilltop Road to the north. Again, this is a closer-in look and you can see some rural, single-family development to the west Butterfield, which has been participant in this process all the way through. There's some existing lots in Riada, in the Riada PD to the east, along with the Colorado Golf Club clubhouse and golf course to the south. In this particular area, if I can get my mouse to work. This is the future Stro Road extension, which will extend north to Hilltop Road. The lots for this filing are generally located down in this corner. They take access off of Preservation Trail and Forest Keep Circle and generally are at that look, at that location. The rest of the subdivision, this larger tract to the north, is open space. The PD was approved in 2000 and platted in 2005 for a number of units. In 2019, the amendment added some additional units for a total of 255. A preliminary plan for the, the area that we're now considering for a final plat was approved in 2019. This final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plan, except that the applicant did actually reduce the number of lots from 37 to 34 in their final design. This is a selection from the final plat exhibit. Lots 1 through 33, which are all of those smaller lots, are clustered. They're accessible by a series of private roadways coming off of Preservation Trail. There's also a single large lot in this corner that's about an acre in size. That was designed to be more consistent with some of the lots that were surrounding it. You can barely see on this exhibit, too, there's an existing core electric easement in this portion that runs through this lot and one of the conditions requires that that easement be vacated before we record the final plat. Open space surrounds the lots and extends up to Hilltop Road, as I was showing you on that other slide. The open space is subject to a permanent open space easement. That easement is created via the plat and will be accepted by the county on the plat. The subdivision is served by Pinery Water and Wastewater. The future Stro Road alignment has already been conveyed to the county. With this filing, though, the developer is providing $83,000 towards the construction of a regional trail that will parallel that Stro Road alignment when it's actually built and that's consistent with one of the PD requirements. These are some site photos. This is a shot from Preservation Trail looking north through the center of the site. This photo also taken from Preservation Trail looks in a northwesterly direction through the site. This looks southwesterly through the site from the approximate location of the Stro Road extension. And finally, this is a view looking north up the proposed Stro Road extension. Track C is on the right-hand side of this photo. This slide lists the approval standards applicable to a final plat. Those approval standards are discussed in detail in the staff report. I will say that the subdivision improvements agreement and all engineering report studies and plans for the final plat have been finally approved. The final plat is consistent with the PD development standards and it's also consistent with the approved preliminary plan. Should the board find that the application complies with all the approval standards for a final plat, staff proposes the following conditions be included in your motion. Condition number one, prior to recordation of the final plat, those portions of the existing core electric easement traversing Lot 34 and portions of Track B and Track C shall be vacated. Condition number two, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall provide and record all required slope and drainage easements adjacent to Stro Road to Douglas Number three, prior to recordation of the final plat, the applicant shall record all Pinery Water and Wastewater District utility and access easements as requested. Condition four, during construction activity within the development, the applicant, its successors and assigned shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources and other cultural history resources and shall immediately notify Douglas County and complete appropriate Colorado Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation Data Management forms in the event of such discovery. We needed a short version of that condition. Condition number five, during subdivision grading activity within the development, the applicant, its successors and assigned shall conduct a burrowing owl study if any earth moving will take place between March 15th and October 31st. Number six, technical corrections to the record copy of the final plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County prior to recordation. And then finally, condition number seven, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 504.06 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters for the board's determination on final plat requests. And that completes my presentation. I can take questions. Otherwise, Brian Connolly is here on behalf of Betts Lake LLC and has a presentation.
Thank you, Jeanette. Any questions for staff?
I have none.
Yes, sir. So just wanted to double check, because I apologize, I think you said it, but I just want to double check what we have here for the final plat. It is in accordance with the PD, the original PD, as well as the preliminary plan.
That is correct.
And then we had a preliminary plan request for 37 lots, but we did see a reduction of three down to 34
Right.
in this final plat.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
So, Jeanette, I'll probably ask this of the applicant as well, obviously. We received correspondence from the Pinery HOA. They speak to previous PD amendments having impacted property designated as open space. That's, that's their perspective. They say that they have a number of ongoing concerns. They feel like it undermines the confidence and trust of county residents in the county planning and zoning process. The need to amend a PD is understood, however, the integrity of the PD is being whittled away. Do you have any thoughts or comments around some of the comments from the Pinery HOA?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Connolly address that, too, but obviously, the Pinery HOA was not supportive of some of the recent PD amendments, especially the one in the southern part of the, the project which showed, which initially had more open space next to them and the, the PD was amended to allow some homes in that area where they didn't anticipate that there would be. And I think they still have some concern over that. I don't, those comments express a point of view, as you were saying, but they really have no relevance to this final plat, I would, I would say, because this, the, these PD amendments, you know, the ones that dealt with the Stro Road alignment and the Metro District property, they were vetted literally for years, I think, with the community. And, you know, I think the plan, the plans as they were developed were very sensitive to all the comments received and it's providing some good roadway improvements and trail connections and things of that nature. So I don't know how much those comments are really relevant to this final plat, but I don't want to speak for them, so.
Let me, just from a staff perspective, let me dig into the comments around the traffic impact study. Is there any merit to some of the additional proposals that they had regarding the traffic?
I would have to let engineering address those, or maybe Brian, if I can pull their letter back up and see. I think they were supportive of the Stro Road extension and some of the intersection improvements that were going to be what, Village and Hilltop? So I don't know if there were other comments. I'd have to go back to the letter and look at it and see what they said, honestly.
Thanks. Well, I'll ask Mr. Connolly if the applicant accepts or has accepted or had conversation around some of these conditions, but I think the initial inquiry I have is whether any of these questions around the traffic impact study are meritorious.
All I can say, and I'll have engineering up, is that, that, you know, engineering staff and our, and our traffic expert looked at the traffic studies and accepted the traffic studies and believe that the improvements address all the impacts. So I don't, I don't think there are any remaining issues that I'm aware of. But Al, do you want to jump in?
Al Peterson, Al Peterson for Engineering Staff. I'm not familiar with what specific questions have been raised, however, Jeanette is correct that the Traffic Division has reviewed the traffic study and approves what's in it.
Specifics are a reference around left turn movement from Village Road to Hilltop Road, level of service F. When the TIS was completed in 2019, they're requesting improvements be made to the intersection sooner than later. Level of service C on the, the turn movements at the intersection are, what they're expected to be, level of service C are better to 2040 when signaledized. And then the TIS recommended Stro Road extension between South Parker Road and Hilltop Road, some widening of East Hilltop Road from Legend High School to Hilltop Road. So I'm just wondering if, if any of these rose to your level of inquiry? Are these outside of the scope of what engineering would deem meritorious?
No. Anything that goes down to level of service D is acceptable. The one that you mentioned at level of service F,
Yeah.
apparently the county is going to address that. There are some improvements proposed for Hilltop Road at this time, so I believe that that's been included in that analysis.
Okay. Thanks, Al. Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, let's open it up to the applicant.
Commissioners, my name is Brian Connolly, C-O-N-N-O-L-L-Y. My business address is 950 Seventeenth Street, Suite 1600 in Denver. I'm with the firm of Otten Johnson, Robinson, Neff and Raginetti. We are pleased to be here before you again, yet again, on the Riada South project and this, pending your approval, may be the last time we're in front of you with a plat request, which is certainly exciting and has been the culmination of many years of work on this project. It would be unfair for me to give this presentation because my colleague Lindsay Lyda has done virtually all of the work on this final plat, so I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay and let her give this, the presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As Brian said, my name is Lindsay Lyda, last name spelled L-Y-D-A. And I'm also with the law firm of Otten Johnson. Business address is also 950 Seventeenth Street, Suite 1600 in Denver. Our firm represents the applicant, Betts Lake LLC, the applicant for the Riada South filing number 1, 7th Amendment final plat. Is there a? There is no clicker. I would also like to just thank staff and engineering for all their help on this application in our prior approvals here at the county. Jeanette did a great job giving a very thorough presentation. We'd like to just remind you of some of the background and history with this project and provide a bit more details on the final plat and some of the design considerations. Again, our request before you is a final plat to provide 34 single-family detached home lots in Planning Area 13 of the Riada South Plan Development. Of these 34 lots, one is a new custom home lot and 33 are smaller clustered lots that create what we are calling the Village. As a reminder, in 2019, we had the 7th Amendment to the PD that you all approved, which allowed for up to 56 units in this same area, of which could be attached housing product. In 2021, we received approval again from you all for a preliminary plan that contemplated a total of 37 residential lots. And at that time, we moved from an attached housing product to detached housing. And then now, we're here before you requesting approval of the final plat for 34 lots. As a reminder of who the players are in this project, the final plat and associated development by the applicant really stem from an ongoing collaborative relationship between the applicant as the master developer, the community members, the Colorado Golf Club Homeowners Association, the golf club entity itself and the Riada South Metropolitan District. We've been fortunate to have a great development team working on this project in the previous approvals before you, all as shown here on this slide. Representatives from our development team are available to answer any additional questions that you may have. Again, the efforts of this final plat and previous approvals over the past several years by the applicant have been intended to ensure the long-term fiscal stability of the Riada South Metropolitan District, as well as continue the high-quality development in, in the community. And specifically with this final plat, there's the opportunity to provide a new type of housing product in the community. I touched on this, but again, a bit of background. It was October of 2019 that the 7th Amendment to the PD was approved, which paved the way for the nine custom lots along Preservation Trail and the 56 additional units, which are now subject to this final plat. The PD amendment also provided for the relocation of the Stro Road right-of-way, as well as additional developer commitments. In 2021, the minor development plat for the nine custom home lots along Preservation Trail was approved by you all, as well as the relocation of Stro Road right-of-way. In April of 2021, you all approved the preliminary plan, again, for 37 lots. This graphic here just shows a bit more context of, this here is the preliminary plan, again, was approved in 2021, as well as the Stro Road right-of-way and Kenny Creek Trail connection. In red is the area subject to this final plat. Again, PD amendment allowed for 56 units in this red area, preliminary plan. Preliminary plan, we, we reduced that number to 34, or excuse me, to 37, and now with final plat, or at 34. Throughout the development process for this final plat and the prior approvals, the applicant team has strived to keep an open line of communication with existing residents, neighboring communities, and the various stakeholders involved in this project. Because the final plat is a bit more technical than our prior approvals, we've conducted less outreach since the preliminary plan phase of the development. However, we've continued to keep neighbors informed and strive to keep that communication line as open as possible. This is an illustrative design of the final plat. Again, here you have the one custom lot, which is about one acre, and it more characteristic of the majority of the lots within the Colorado Golf Club. These 33 lots here make up, again, what we are calling the Village. The idea is to smaller lots, smaller home style clustered into different enclaves. Here, all connected by the private drives. The design and layout of the Village itself, we think, has been very responsive to neighbor feedback, feedback over the years of working through this project with the county, as well as design and engineering considerations. The whole Village concept is designed to fit into the existing topographic conditions and blend in with the natural landscape as much as possible. This is the intent for a variety of reasons. One, to preserve mountain views by aligning lots and driveways along the existing ridges instead of on creating, you know, higher, higher heights of homes. All, all homes are limited at 35 feet in height. There's additional landscaping being proposed, both within the final plat itself and then along both sides of Stro Road, in an effort to mitigate any view impacts as much as possible. Additionally, as Jeanette mentioned, open space will be preserved with an open space easement dedicated to the county by the final plat, as well as internal trails that are intended to connect each enclave to a crosswalk that will occur in here, either for pedestrian or golf cart use, to connect the Village to the clubhouse itself. Matt's report was very thorough in going through the approval standards, so I won't, I won't go through them again. If you have any questions on the approval standards or anything else on the application, myself or a member of our team would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions for the applicant?
I have one question. When do you anticipate that the extension for Stro Road will be completed?
That will be up to the county. The applicant will be grading a portion of it. Applicant will be responsible for grading the portion within Planning Area 13, but the eventual construction will be whenever the county deems it necessary.
And when are you going to do that grading?
I believe it needs to be graded before the 19th building permit is issued for the Village.
Thank you.
Further questions? So let me just ask, are you comfortable with the seven conditions? Do you accept the seven conditions as presented?
We do. Thank you.
Okay. And then could you or, or Mr. Connolly speak to some of the considerations raised by the Pineary HOA that I, I asked of staff?
In our referral response to the Pineary HOA, we noted that we think some of their concerns, they may be confusing this final plat with the Rhiata Ranch, which is in the southeast portion of the Rhiata Colorado Golf Club community. I don't have, this is, you know, our final plat, the Pineary is more down here, and that Rhiata Ranch would be in here. So they, they are directly adjacent to Rhiata Ranch. Some of the specific concerns of streets would be, those would be traffic impacts from Rhiata Ranch, not from this development.
Okay. So you think maybe some of these, these comments are confused or misinformed?
We do. There, there was the comment on the Hilltop Road traffic signal, which does relate to this project. But I believe that was the only one that seemed to be directly related here.
Okay. And I'm reading, too, that the applicant is responsible to contribute a pro-rata share of traffic infrastructure improvements identified in the traffic improvement study, and that the, the county engineering department is, is requiring. Correct?
Correct. Engineering did, though. We calculated our pro-rata share of that traffic signal for, it's Hilltop and Village up here. Based on our traffic study and as was approved by the engineering department, that number came out to be, I believe it was 0.005%, would be the pro-rata share between these two final plats. So engineering waived that.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I will open up this item for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item 3A? I'm sorry, item 2C. Seeing none in the room, is there any online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve Rhiata South filing number one, Seventh Amendment, with seven conditions as presented, project file SB 2021-059.
Second, and wish to make an additional comment after, second, and wish to make an additional comment.
Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, sir. So I, I did want to thank the applicant. I know we had that discussion pertaining to the grading for Stro Road or not. Listen, I very much appreciate you guys bringing it up. It shows that you're smart business people and all. But at the same token, thank you for respecting the position that the county took and, and of course, finding a way to make this development work so that we can continue to plan for that time that Stro Road does go through. And we, we have that, what's, what's really going to be a bit of a vital connect in the, within the community. So I just wanted to thank you guys for that and taking us through that discussion and doing it together with us.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Further discussion? I'll just say that I've reviewed the approval criteria in 50301 at sec and believe that it, it meets the approval criteria, so I will be in support. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes. Congratulations. With that, we will move to item three of our public hearing agenda items. Item 3A, Castle Pines Village, filing number 44A, First Amendment, Minor Development Plat, project file SB 2021-053. Brett Thomas presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brett Thomas for Planning Services. The applicant for Castle Pines Village, filing number 44A, First Amendment, project file SB 2021-053, has requested the item be continued to the Board of County Commissioners hearing on April 12, 2022, at 2:30 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Well, let's see here. So I guess what we would need to do, so you're asking for us to continue this, Brett?
Correct.
Okay. Lance, do we need to have any public comment on that? We can just continue it, right?
You have the authority to continue this item. You are welcome to accept public comment, but you don't have to.
Okay. I will go ahead and, and accept a, a motion to continue on this item.
Move to continue. Castle Pines Village, filing number 44A, First Amendment, Minor Development Plat, project file SB 2021-053, to April 12.
I was going to add that I'll second a motion that includes additional language to April 12, 2022, at 2:30 PM. Is that acceptable?
It is. Thank you, Commissioner.
And I'll second that.
So we have a first and second, and with an amendment that has been accepted by the mover. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion to continue carries. Thank you, Brett. And with that, we'll move to item 3B, Resolution, Rezoning a Parcel Land Totalling 20.09 Acres Located in Douglas County, Colorado From Agricultural One to Large Rural Residential, project file ZR 2021-001. Mike Pesica for staff. Seek up.
Mike Pesica, representing Planning Services. The project before you today is the 4734 Foxborough Road Rezoning, project number ZR 2021-001. The property owner is the Letitia Marie Bridgeford Revocable Trust, represented by CJ Kirst of Tahoe Consulting, who is in attendance today. Oops. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is. I'm going to take this off. The request is for a rezon from agricultural one to large rural residential for a 20-acre property located approximately 860 feet east of Foxborough Road in the entrance to Bayou Gulch Regional Park. There is a corresponding minor development application for the same property that will also be heard by the Board, by the BCC this afternoon. The rezon intent is to provide a process, as described in zoning resolution section 2501, to provide a process to amend the official zone district map with regard to the area of any zoning district. The rezon process begins with the submittal of an application following a review period by referral agencies and the public, notices given for public hearings before the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. During the referral process, the Pineary Water and Wastewater District provided a well-served letter indicating capacity to provide both water and sanitation services to the new lot and already provide services to the existing residents. Franktown Fire District had no objections to the proposed rezoning. One resident provided comments during the courtesy notice period. The resident was concerned with the proposed location of a new home and impacts to views from their property. The neighbor was also concerned with storage of materials on the site and use of ATVs and other activities. The Planning Commission heard the proposal on February 28, 2022, and recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. No one from the public spoke at the PC hearing on this item. This is a map of the site with the zoning overlaid. The property is outlined, outlined in red and is zoned A1. Properties to the east and west are also zoned A1. To the north and south is planned development zoning. The minimum lot size in the LRR Zone District is 10 acres or greater, and again, the property is 20 acres in size. This is an aerial photo of the property. Again, the, the site is outlined in red. You can see the existing home and the existing private drive that connects to Foxborough Road, which provides access to the property. To the south is the Bayou Gulch Regional Park, and to the north is the Pineary Development. The subject parcel was zoned agricultural one by the Board of County Commissioners in 1955 and has not changed. There's one single-family home with accessory structures on the site, and you saw the private driveway that connects to Foxborough Road that not only provides access to the resident, the property in question, also for two adjacent properties to the west. Quickly run through some pictures. This is a view looking east at the private drive that provides access for the subject property, and this is the entrance to Bayou Gulch Regional Park. This is looking north at the existing home and accessory structures on the site, and this is standing on the private drive. This view is again on the private drive looking due west. And finally, this is taken from the north of the property within a tract in the Pineary Development, looking due south, and you can see the, the existing home in the right-hand center of the picture there. And this is the applicant's rezon exhibit showing the property outlined in red in the center of the exhibit. If approved, the rezon would allow for large rural residential development on the property. This slide lists the approval standards, which are discussed in detail in your staff In staff's assessment, the request meets the eligibility criteria for a rezoning. The rezon process is described in zoning resolution section 2504.09. The board shall evaluate the rezon request, staff report, referral agency comments, applicant responses, the Planning Commission recommendation, and public comment and testimony, and shall approve, approve with conditions, continue, table for further study, remand to the Planning Commission, or deny the rezon request. That concludes my presentation. CJ Kirst, the applicant's representative, is here today to answer questions. He does not have a, a formal presentation, however.
Thank you, Mr. Pesica. Any questions for staff?
I have one question, Mike, about the, the driveway that is on county property, and the applicant will have to move that onto their own property at their own expense. Is that, and they're aware of that?
They are, and details of that will be discussed in the minor development application, which you'll, you'll hear next.
Great. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Further questions? You know, I, I'm wondering if it would be helpful to hear everything associated with this presentation and then take two motions, but I am noticing, this is for, for council, it looks like the motion log and then the agenda items are incongruent. I don't know if you can correct that. We've got a A through F in the motion log, and then on the public agenda items, we have an A through E.
I didn't notice the misnumbering. So I think on the motions log, we would be, or proposed motions log, we would be on If you could give me just a moment, I apologize.
Wasn't Sunshine Acres two weeks ago?
Okay. Good afternoon Commissioners. Carolyn Washi Freeland for Planning Services. I'll be presenting the minor development plat portion for this request. The project number for this request is SB 2021-024, and CJ Kirst is here on behalf of the applicant, Chris Bridgeford. The applicant is requesting approval of a minor development plat to subdivide a 20-acre parcel into two single-family lots, each 10 acres in size. The intent of the minor development process is to provide a streamlined review process for the creation of 10 or fewer single-family residential lots. The minor development plat process begins with the submittal of an application. Following comments by staff, the request is forwarded to referral agencies. At the beginning of the referral period, courtesy notifications of an application and process are sent to abutting landowners. Staff further analyzes the request, and the applicant is provided the opportunity to address any issues identified through the referral period. Public notice is provided, and the request is heard by the Planning Commission prior to the consideration by the Board of County Commissioners. The Planning Commission heard the proposal at its public hearing on February 28. No members of the public spoke in response to the application, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the minor development. These are the zoning and the aerial photos that were presented in the rezoning, so I'll skip through those. And then, just to briefly revisit the background, the property has been rezoned agricultural one since the inception of zoning in the county and since 1955. The existing home on the site was built in 2003, and Pinery Water and Sanitation District provides water and sanitary sewer services to the site. The minor development plat exhibit shows the proposed two 10-acre lots. The site is accessed by an existing private drive that runs along the southern boundary of the parcel traveling west of Foxborough Road. This driveway also provides access to the two existing parcels to the west of the Bridgeford property. Douglas County driveway regulations limits shared driveways to serve no more than three lots. Because the plat establishes a fourth lot on the existing driveway, the applicant applied for and was granted a variance by Public Works Engineering to allow the shared driveway to serve up to four lots. The portion of the driveway that encroaches into the regional park will be realigned back into the existing 30-foot roadway easement. The applicant will cover the cost of the driveway realignment and will work with the adjacent property owners to correct the driveway alignment. A shared driveway easement has been established to serve lots one and two along the shared north-south lot boundary. I'll go through these very quickly. Again, this is some site photos of the site. This is looking north. This site is looking southward towards the Bayou Gulch Regional Park, and you can see Pike's Peak in the distance. This side is looking east of the property, and you can see the native vegetation and trees present near the site. And finally, this site looks looking west, and you can see the topography with the slight slopes that slope northwest. I'm sorry, north-south. The approval standards for a minor development request are set forth in section 603 of the subdivision resolution and listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed in detail within the staff report. Staff has evaluated the minor development plat in accordance with Article 6 of the Douglas County subdivision resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards for the minor development plat are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion into the motion. Condition number one, prior to board approval of the minor development final plat, the board shall approve the request to rezone the property to the large rural residential zoning district. Condition number two, prior to the recordation of the minor development plat, the applicant shall provide a declaration of restrictive covenants, reserving the water beneath the property for the benefit of future landowners within the subdivision. Condition number three, prior to recordation of the minor development plat, school and park fees shall be paid by the applicant. Condition number four, prior to issuance of a building permit, for lot two, the new private driveway shall be constructed and relocated outside of county property. Condition number five, prior to recordation of the minor development final plat, technical corrections to the plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And finally, condition number six, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 604.08 of the subdivision resolution sets forth the parameters of the board's determination on minor development plat requests, as noted in this slide. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions. Otherwise, CJ Kirst is here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions for staff? And I have none. Thank you, Carolyn. At this point, we'll move to the applicant's presentation.
The applicant does not have a formal presentation.
Oh, okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question for the applicant.
And sir, if you just want to state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. CJ Kirst, Tahoe Consulting, 5730 East Otero Avenue, Centennial, Colorado 80112.
Thank you, Mr. Kirst. In the packet, there is a concern from a Julie Crozier who is concerned about using the existing driveway for both homes, and that they ride their ATVs on their property shooting guns, and it's not compatible with the neighbors who are nearby. Have you talked to this neighbor? Was there any discussion?
Have not spoken with her. I think that was early on in the rezoning process. I'm not aware of the, really, the allegations, so to speak. It is an agricultural piece of property. I don't think there's any harm in them riding their ATVs. As far as the driveway goes, I think we've demonstrated and gotten the variance approved, showing that, you know, we can use the driveway for an additional lot at this point. There was some temporary construction done for a barn in the course of us going through this process. That may have been some of the comments she was making, just because of that activity.
I see Mike Pesica has come to your rescue.
Commissioner Thomas, Mike Pesica with Planning Services. Just to touch on the complaint from the neighbor, the staff followed up with zoning compliance on the concern she had, and they indicated there were no zoning violations on the property and what the applicant was doing, the storage of materials, the riding of ATVs, et cetera, was allowed in the A1 Zone District.
Thank you. And the driveway will be taken care of off the county property?
Yes.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? And I have none. And with that, we will open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment on either item 3B or 3C of the agenda today? Do we have any comment online?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, we will bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a few motions.
Did the applicant agree to the conditions?
Thank you for that reminder. So again, let me ask if the applicant will accept the six conditions as presented?
We do.
Okay. Thank you for stating that on the record. With that, I'll bring you back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Before I make the motion, I'll just say that when I reviewed the packet, it appeared to me that the, these applications meet the criteria as well. So for item 3B, I have a motion to approve a resolution rezoning a parcel of land totaling 20.09 acres located in Douglas County, Colorado, from agricultural one to large rural residential. Project file ZR 2021-001.
Second.
There's a first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries.
If it pleases the board, I have a motion to approve Bridgeford Minor Development Plat with six conditions as presented, project file SB 2021-024.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries as well. Congratulations. And with that, we will move to item 3D, which is the Canyon South Plan Development, Seventh Amendment, project file ZR 2022-003. Heather Scott presenting for staff. Hi, Heather.
Hi there. So, good afternoon Commissioners. Heather Scott representing Planning Services. The request is a major plan development amendment for the Canyon South PD, project number ZR 2022-003. Brian Connolly from Otten Johnson Robinson is here on behalf of the owners. The request is a major plan development amendment to the Canyon South Plan Development map to shift units from planning areas nine, 11, 12, 14, and 15, and redistribute them to planning areas one, three, four, seven, 10, 13, and 16. Planning areas two, five, six, and eight are not altered with this amendment. The intent of the major PD amendment process is to encourage innovative and creative design to facilitate a mix of use in the development of a balanced community, including residential, business, commercial, recreational, open, and other selected secondary uses in accordance with section 24-67-101 of the Colorado Revised Statute. PD major amendment process begins with the submittal of an application. Following a review period of referral agencies and public, notice is given for public hearings before the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. Comments were received from abutting property owners and nearby residents. Comments are included in the staff report. General concerns regarding the proposal include increase in density with the southern portion of the property potentially being annexed into the town of Castle Rock, which will significantly increase traffic, impact views, and reduce open space. At its March 7, 2022, public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended denial by a vote of seven to one. The Planning Commissioners felt that section 1520 of the Douglas County Zoning Resolution approval criteria for a major amendment could not be met. Specifically, they mentioned 152002, whether the amendment is consistent with the intent and preservation of the entire plan development, pushing too many units to the northern portion of this PD. 152003, whether the amendment will adversely affect the public interest or enjoyment of the adjacent land, since the land could be impacted with more homes if annexed. And 152004, whether the sole purpose of the amendment is to confer a special benefit upon an individual. Several Planning Commissioners felt that the developer should be classified as an individual. The Canyon's South PD Seventh Amendment area, outlined in red, is located approximately southeast of Crowfoot Valley Road between the towns of Castle Rock and Parker. As seen on the aerial outlined in red, construction is underway, and people have begun purchasing and moving into single-family homes found on site. As a background, the original Canyon's PD was approved back in 2000. Bifurcation of the Canyon's PD creating two separate plan developments, the Canyon's and Canyon South, was approved in 2004. The Canyon South First Amendment was to modify trail locations, widths, and materials in planning areas. The Second Amendment transferred density for a more efficient lotting pattern. The Third Amendment shifted acreage between residential, open space, and golf course planning areas. The Fourth Amendment adjusted planning area boundaries and shifted density. This was the last major amendment brought before the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners back in 2008. The Fifth Amendment shifted planning area boundary locations, configurations, and density. The Sixth Amendment adjusted residential and open space areas, modified the right-of-way alignment, and adjusted some density. Before you is the proposed amended PD map with a red boundary added for clarity. Density is shifting from planning areas 11, 12, and 15, identified in red, below the dash line on the southern portion of the property, and being redistributed. line on the southern portion of the property and being redistributed to multiple planning areas north of the dash line identified in green. There were a few other minor density shifts as well. There are several planning areas identified in yellow that do not gain nor lose any lots, any units, excuse me. Following our site photos, this view is to the northeast from Crimson Sky Drive towards the southern boundary of Canyon South. This photo is taken from Fervid Street south through the property toward the future amenity center for the development. This view is east through the middle of the property from Hot Pepper Way. This view is southwest from Hot Pepper Way. And this view is from Crowfoot Valley Road close to the proposed northern entrance into McCanta at Long Story Avenue. Section 150509 sets forth the parameters for the board's recommendation of the major amendment request. The approval standards for a major PD amendment request are set forth in section 15 and listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards is discussed in detail in the staff report. Staff has evaluated the major plan development amendment request in accordance with section 15 of the zoning resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards have been met, staff proposes the following conditions that may be included in your motion. Condition one, prior to recordation, all technical corrections will be made to the Planning Department document to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition two, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in public testimony have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving this application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all commitments and promises. Part two of the county staff report, including the request, the process, and location of the site, was omitted from your packet. I have provided legal with a copy of that page. These should be pages two and three of the staff report. I do have the requested density change table as well as a map identifying where the units are being transferred to and from. If you would like to see those up on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available to take questions on the staff report at this time if the board wishes. Otherwise Brian Connolly is here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you Heather. Any questions for staff? And I have none. If the applicant would like to present?
I'll pull up the presentation. I'll do the preliminaries. Brian Connolly, C-O-N-N-O-L-L-Y. Business address is 950 Seventeenth Street, Suite 1600 in Denver. I'm with the firm of Otten Johnson Robinson Neff and Raginetti. So now you see why I asked my colleague to present to you earlier so you didn't have to listen to me twice today. Thank you very much for, for having us here for this major amendment application. I do before I begin certainly want to thank staff. This one has, as you can tell by the number of amendments that have been done on this PD, staff is intimately familiar with it and we sure appreciate all the work that they've done on this project, this application specifically. Just to talk a little bit through what I'm going to present today, I'll introduce our team. I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about the summary of the request, which you've obviously already heard from Heather. I'll talk in some depth about the background of this PD and the transfer of dwelling units provision in the PD and about the proposal that we have here before you today. I will detour a little bit and talk about some of what the, the issues that arose when we were before the Planning Commission three weeks ago, just so you understand some of the concerns that you heard from Heather. And then of course, I'll, I'll talk through very briefly the approval standards. I'm joined today by much of the team here. I have the privilege of representing Heinz, which is the master developer of Canyon South or what is called by its marketing name McCanta. Chad Murphy and Richard Cross are here on behalf of Heinz. We also have Al Cunningham here on behalf of PCS. They've done most of the planning work on this project. And then Brian Moss is here from Caliber Engineering, who is the civil engineer on this project. And any of us will be happy to answer your questions that you might have on this proposal. So just a little bit about the project, since this is, this is a project that, I know we've been before you previously on plats, but just kind of a status update with it. As Heather mentioned, there are a number of single-family homes that have been constructed in the community. As of my last check, 63 of those have been sold. So the project is, is underway. There's a rec center that's under construction and our entire team is proud of what's, what's happening out there at Canyon South or McCanta. And the county should be as well. The county has put a lot of work into this project over a period of many years. And so it's great to see what's going on. Again, Heather detailed the request, but we're requesting to transfer 80 dwelling units that are permitted in this, generally in the southern portion of the property. Oops, southern portion of the property, the, the red planning areas to the green planning areas in the northeastern portion of the property. And those would be, we are not asking for an increase in the overall density of the project. Those, those are 80 units that are already permitted by the PD and that we're just requesting transfer to other planning areas. So now the rest of the presentation is really going to discuss kind of why we're here and what we're looking for. So since the PD's original approval, it is contained, it is, first of all, it has allowed 968 dwelling units and it has allowed for the transfer of dwelling units between the planning areas that are in the PD. So I'm going to point out here, and we'll, we'll talk about this section quite a bit, section 8.3 of the plan development. This is really the crux of why we're here, is that it unambiguously says that the overall density and total number of dwelling units permitted within any individual residential planning area may be increased by the transfer of dwelling units up to a maximum of 1.2 times, 20% increase the total number of dwelling units specified on the development plan for that planning area. And that's so long as the total number, the total number of 968 is not exceeded. So that underlined language on the screen is really key in thinking about why we're here. And I would also just point out that we are obviously here for a major amendment, but it does not say that a major amendment is needed to do, to accomplish these dwelling unit transfers. By the terms of the PD itself, these are, the, the transfer of these dwelling units is permitted by right. And what's important about the language that's on your screen, and this is something I'll come back to a few times as I go through this presentation, is that Heinz relied on this language when it purchased this project. Heinz, like any good investor or, or real estate owner, conducted due diligence, read the PD, read all the approvals that relate to this, this property, and concluded based on looking at this section 8.3 that it would have the ability to transfer these dwelling units within the project. And so the importance of a landowner relying on the approvals that the county has given in the past is an important theme here as we go through our presentation. So why are we here requesting a transfer of dwelling units? First and foremost, we believe it's our legal right to do that based on the language that's in the PD. But perhaps also importantly, it allows for more efficient delivery of infrastructure. By consolidating units closer together, it allows the, the community to take advantage of having fewer lame miles of streets, have more consolidated open space that's closer to where the, where the dwelling units are. It reduces the long-term cost for the metro district. And then speaking of the metro district, I'll talk in, in a few minutes about what this means for the metro district, particularly as it relates to the, the proposed annexation that Heather mentioned. And then also, what this ultimately will do is allow for the county to retain control over the 80 dwelling units in the event that annexation occurs. Again, I'll talk about that momentarily. So in reliance on that section 8.3 of the PD, Heinz first went to staff and requested approval of an administrative amendment to the PD to allow these, these dwelling unit transfers. As you undoubtedly know, section 15 of the zoning resolution allows for administrative amendments of PDs to be approved where a proposal does not exceed a 20% change in the density in a particular dwelling, or particular planning area. So we submitted that request to staff and staff asked us to prepare, which is, this is in your packet, a summary of how the various commitments in the PD would continue to be fulfilled should this transfer of dwelling units be approved. So we, we provided that, we summarized how the commitments would continue to, to be fulfilled. And so after reviewing the application, staff came back to us and concluded that we needed to bring this forward as a major amendment. Staff's concern was that the board had not reviewed this PD since 2008, which was the Fourth Amendment, and that the dwelling unit transfers that we're requesting exceed 20% from the Fourth Amendment of the PD. Again, Heinz bought the Fifth Amendment of the PD and was relying on the language in the Fifth Amendment believing that it could accomplish those dwelling unit transfers on an administrative basis. So we elected to convert our application to a major amendment and bring it before the Planning Commission and then now the board for your review. The next slide here is, I'm going to show a lot of numbers. The numbers themselves are not important. What, what the, the story of what I'm about to say is more important. So don't, don't, no need to focus on the numbers specifically. So on the slide right now shows the number of units that are allowed in each planning area under the Fourth Amendment. So that was the last time that the Board of County Commissioners approved an amendment to the Canyon South PD. The Fifth Amendment was, was administratively approved because the, any dwelling unit changes were less than the 20%. And that is the, that is the amendment to the PD that Heinz purchased the property in reliance upon. So Heinz reviewed the Fifth Amendment to the PD and said, "We have the ability to change dwelling, or change the number of dwelling units by up to 20% based on the Fifth, the numbers in the Fifth Amendment." The Sixth Amendment was done as, as really sort of a cleanup on a number of things. It didn't change many dwelling units. There are a few places where there were one or two dwelling units were, were shifted, but it was, it was fairly minor in that way. So then when we get to the Seventh Amendment, this shows the numbers of, of units that are proposed. And so what you see when you look at the percentage changes of, from the two, is that the fifth to the seventh, so, so Heinz purchased the Fifth Amendment, none of those exceed 20%. And then the sixth to the seventh, none of those exceed 20%. So again, Heinz is just basing this application on its due diligence, what it believed it had the right to do, which is shift 20% dwelling units from the Fifth Amendment that it purchased. So again, turning back to the request, just, you've already seen this map, you've, you've heard about it. A few additional points, the planning areas that remain unchanged, they were yellow on Heather's map. I don't have them in yellow, they're just white. Those are the planning areas where homes are already constructed and people are moving in. So just to be clear, none of the dwelling unit transfers that are occurring here are going to affect neighborhoods that people have purchased homes in, that people are already living in. These dwelling unit transfers would affect planned areas that are to the northeast of the property and will be built out at a later date. The planning areas, and then, then all of the, the sending planning areas are located in this southern portion of the property. And we, we again believe that these transfers are consistent with the PD because they don't exceed the 968 total dwelling units that are permitted by the PD. So I'm going to turn to talk about something which I hate to tell you is, is actually, I think irrelevant to your consideration today, but I want to clarify a few points that were raised at the Planning Commission because I just think it's important for you all and the public to understand what's going on here and, and the, the sort of relationship, or rather, lack of interrelationship between this application and the proposed annexation in Castle Rock. The proposed annexation is a completely different land use application. And so, but I do want to just explain what, what's going on there. So, so looking at this map, the, the overall Canyon South property is 2,043 acres. There's, at the very top of it is, what's shown in green is a regional park. The regional park was required to be dedicated by the Canyon South PD. That commitment was fulfilled. That's 450 acres, which has been conveyed to the county. So the county owns the northerly 450 acres of the, the overall property. In 2018, the prior owner of the, the remainder of the PD, which is Low Residential, sold off what you see is in blue to Heinz. And so we're here today on behalf of Heinz. This is the property that Heinz has generally controlled. Obviously doesn't own all the property anymore because some of it's been sold to new homeowners, but that's the property that Heinz has been working on. Low retained 421 acres in the southern portion of the property, which is what's shown in As of right now, the prior owner, Low, is, has filed a petition to annex its property into the town of Castle Rock. That application is not a Heinz application. I do not have any details about that application. It has been filed, it is in process, and is under review before the town. But what happens on that property, I just want to be clear, is ultimately a question for the town council. I know Commissioner Teal, you've served on a town council, you know what that means. Ultimately, the town council is going to make the decision as to whether to annex that property, how to zone that property, and how that property should be built out. If the town declines to annex the property, obviously that would remain in the county's jurisdiction. And perhaps, just to put a little bit of a finer point on it, annexation is somewhat of a one-sided game. Local, municipal governments have sort of sole authority to determine whether or not to annex property. So what any of us do here today, whether it's us with our application or you with your decision on this application, is not going to be able to impact what Castle Rock might do with that property. And what Castle Rock might do really is speculative because that's an application that's in process. The town council has not reviewed it. We don't know what, what Castle Rock will do with that application. I have no sense of, you know, what, what public support or opposition for it is, so I really can't comment on that. So to walk through in maybe a little bit of more detail about what that means, so we're here today with our PD amendment application. If the Board of County Commissioners approves this application and then Castle Rock annexes that southern portion of the PD, again, Castle Rock is going to determine what level of density is permitted in that, in that southern portion. Castle Rock could approve five units there, it could approve 50 units there, it could approve 500 or 5,000 units there. That would be up to Castle Rock's jurisdiction to make that decision. Castle Rock would determine what uses are permitted on that southern portion of the property and the southern portion of the property would, would develop out as permitted by Castle Rock under Castle Rock regulations. The county would then retain jurisdiction only over those blue and green parts of the property that I showed on the prior map. If Castle Rock does not annex the southern portion of the property, but you approve the PD amendment today, what you would have is the overall density of the PD would remain at 968 units. The permitted uses would remain exactly as they're allowed on the PD. The southern portion would develop as permitted by the PD, which in this case would mean no units are allocated to that southern portion, so it would, it would remain vacant. And the county would control the build-out of the entire PD. If you were to deny the amendment today and Castle Rock were to annex the property, the exact same outcome would happen, right? Castle Rock would annex that southern portion of the property, it would have all the control in the world over how that southern portion of the property develops. And if Castle Rock does not annex the PD and you deny the application today, then the PD obviously remains exactly as it is right now without any change. So I want to turn to some of the questions and comments that, that came up at Planning Commission and just respond to some of them a little more directly, just so you all understand them. So one of the, one of the questions that came up or a member of the public asked, I think, was, was, so does this, if, if you approve this today, does this clear the path for Castle Rock to annex the, the southern portion of the property? The answer to that is 100% no, it doesn't. Castle Rock as a municipal government has the ability to annex whatever property it would like to annex based on the petition that it received. So this is not, and this is not an application that's here to clear the decks for Castle Rock to do anything. This is not a precursor for Castle Rock to do anything. Castle Rock has all the authority in the world to simply annex that southern portion of the property based on the petition that has been filed. The second question that, that came up that we, we talked about a lot at Planning Commission is, does the, this proposed amendment make the Canyon South PD more dense? The answer is no. Again, it would be 968 units on 2,043 acres. Nothing about this application before you today changes the overall density of the Canyon South PD. So aren't we reducing the overall size of the Canyon South PD? If Castle Rock annexes that southern portion of the property, have we just then reduced, we've, we've cut the denominator, so all of a sudden we have a more dense Canyon South PD? This application does not do that. Only Castle Rock's annexation of that southern portion of the property could effectuate that change. And again, even if the 80 units were left on the southern portion of the property, Castle Rock can annex it and zone it. Rock can annex it and zone it for however many units Castle Rock deems appropriate. So, it could take those 80 units and add those to whatever the application is for right now for zoning, or Castle Rock could approve more units on the property. That's really in Castle Rock's discretion. Another question was, "Does this change the intent of the Canyon South PD?" The answer is no. There's a well-held legal principle that the best evidence of intent is what's written on the face of the document, and here, the intent was very evident. Section 8.3 of the PD allows for dwelling unit transfers among the planning areas in the Canyon South PD. Another question was asked, there was a concern, "Well, could Heinz just file an application to annex the blue property into Castle Rock and ask for more density?" The answer to that is no. Heinz could not do that. First of all, we have homeowners in the northern portion of the property, and to file a petition for annexation would require at least some of them to sign it. And so, it would be administratively difficult to file an application or a petition to annex into Castle Rock. But more importantly, the build-out of Canyon South is, in part, driven by a series of agreements that relate to water and sewer that are between the town and then the pinery as well. And so, the build-out of Canyon South sort of has to happen in the county because of a series of agreements that relate to the development itself. Another question was, "Would this application change the open space and trails in the PD?" The answer to that is no. The open space is not changing at all based on this transfer of dwelling units. All the open space that's there, the trails, the amenities that have been constructed for residents, those will all remain exactly as they are on the PD. They're not changing as a result of this application. And then, a question was asked about how we address traffic and density concerns that were raised by neighbors about the prospect of additional dwelling units. Again, that's a decision that needs to be made by the Castle Rock Town Council. And so, if neighbors are concerned about what additional traffic might come, what additional traffic might come of an annexation application, or what density might come, those concerns are best directed to the Castle Rock Town Council because the Castle Rock Town Council is the entity that has the authority to make that decision. Then a question came up about, "Does this application change the viability of the Metropolitan Districts in the PD?" The answer is that this application does not change anything about the viability of the Metropolitan Districts. The Metropolitan Districts were financed and bonds were issued based on having 968 dwelling units and the assessed value from those 968 dwelling units to support the Metro District. What I will say is this, there are 80 units on the southern portion of the property. If Castle Rock were to annex those and subsume those into Castle Rock, that would be 80 less units on which the Metropolitan District debt would be paid off. So, in other words, instead of 968 units, 888 houses would have to pay off that Metro District debt. So, it's a higher amount of debt per home if those 80 units were lost as part of an annexation to Castle Rock. So, it is actually, denying this application, if Castle Rock were to proceed to annex the southern portion of the property, would have a negative impact on the viability of the Metro District. I think Heather's staff report did an excellent job of running through the approval standards. I am not going to go through these in any level of detail, but I will be happy to answer any questions that you have. Before we wrap up our presentation, I would like Chad Murphy from Heinz to come up and just make a very brief set of comments, just talking about their reliance on the PD.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Chad Murphy. Last name is spelled M-U-R-P-H-Y. I'm a Managing Director at Heinz, and our office is located at 1144 15th Street, Suite 2600 in Denver, Colorado. Brian did a great job of explaining our position on this matter before you today. Real quickly, Heinz is one of the largest real estate development companies in the world, investing in real estate and developing projects really around the globe. And here in Colorado, we develop in every product type, from commercial to residential projects, just like Canyon South or as we call it now, McCanta. So, whenever we invest in a new project, we do do careful due diligence, as Brian stated, to ensure that we know what we're buying and we know what we're building and what we can build. And we impose this same commitment of due diligence on Canyon South when we purchased the property here back in 2018. When we first looked at this opportunity, Canyon South, in 2017, we were really impressed on a couple of different levels. One, the property is beautiful. If you've been out there, been by it, it's a wonderful piece of property. And it has access to many of the things that make Douglas County one of the nation's best places to live, work, and play. And Douglas County has always been known to work, has been known as Colorado's, one of Colorado's best places to do businesses, and that, to do business, and that's why we were impressed with the opportunity to work here. This was our first investment in Douglas County. So, we carefully reviewed all of the codes, regulations, and approvals specifically as it applied to this property. And so, prior to that purchase, we reviewed the section that Brian recommended, or brought up earlier in that Canyon South Fifth Amended PD, which allows for that 20% density transfer, and we're really talking about those 80 dwelling units. The PD does not say that the dwelling unit transfers must be reevaluated, and so, nor that some previous PD version would be a baseline for that 20% calculation. So, we really did take that language at face value, and we made a $35 million investment in this land based upon that reliance. And to be totally candid, we would not have made that level of investment on this property if we did not fundamentally believe that we could develop those 968 home sites. So, needless to say, we were surprised when we were asked earlier this year to go in front of the County Commissioners here publicly because we believed it was an administrative ability to do this amendment. And so, although we disagreed, we were happy to come before you all on the Planning Commission to give the opportunity for your review of this amendment. So, fast forward four years later, you know, we're very proud of what we've built at McCanta. Brian mentioned how many homes are up there, 968, of which 63, we have homeowners now living there. There's probably a couple hundred houses already nearly fully built out. The Rec Center is slated to open in May, and it's, we're really thrilled with how well it's coming along. I think it'll be one of a kind. It's called the Spoke, but there's already new families out there, open spaces, trails, great amenities. And all of the marketing materials that the builders have shown and that we have relied upon depict the 968 lots that we had anticipated, really, since our involvement in this project. So, you know, one of the things that we just, we rely upon in our industry is honoring our commitments as Heinz, and we conduct business with that mentality, and Douglas County has operated that same way, too. And Douglas County has earned a reputation for that. And we know that, we know that we've been honoring all of our commitments at Canyon South, and today, we're asking the county to honor a commitment that it made in this entitlement back in, on the Fifth Amended PD. So, just in summary, when we purchased the property, we did rely upon this Fifth Amended PD, which allows the transfer of these dwelling units, as shown in the Seventh PD that's before you today. And we're simply asking for the right to abide by this language. And thus, we ask for your approval of this application, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Connolly, did you have additional comments?
I would echo what Mr. Murphy said. We respectfully request your approval and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Hello, Mr. Connolly. So, in the packet was a letter from a gentleman named Perry Patel. Do you happen to have this letter?
I do.
Can you walk me?
If you could tell me which page you're on, I would.
Well, it's 503 in my packet, and it cuts off the pages at the bottom of your packet.
I won't interrupt you, but I found it.
You found it.
It's not, it's not page 502 in my packet, but I have it.
So, I have read this, and it sounds like he is saying that the lots, the units, the 80 units that are being moved are moving from Low's property to Heinz's property. Is that correct, or am I reading this wrong?
That's correct. So, Mr. Patel lives in the Terrain Development, which is located in Canyon, in Castle Rock, on the south side of, if you could pull up my presentation again, on the south side of the red property, the Low property. Okay, perfect. I'll just go back to the map. Mr. Patel's property is right sort of here.
Okay.
On the south side of the property. So, he's correct that the 80 dwelling units that are proposed in this portion of the property would be moved up to this portion of the property. So, they would be moved away from his home.
So, I would think that would make him happy.
I would, too, respectfully. I think, again, this is, I think, a concern that was raised at the Planning Commission, and I think which is reflected in the letters that you see, is that there's a view that this transfer of dwelling units is somehow a prerequisite to Castle Rock annexing the southern portion of the property. It is not. It is not a prerequisite. Castle Rock can annex this portion of the property whether there were 80 approved dwelling units on it or 1,000 approved dwelling units on it based on the petition that was filed by that landowner. And so, I think, again, this is a place where I would say that if Mr. Patel is concerned about additional density in this portion of the property, his concerns are best addressed to the Castle Rock Town Council because that is the entity that has the authority to determine how that property will build out. Of course, unless they deny the annexation petition, in which case, then the county would continue to have that jurisdiction.
And the ability to transfer these is because this was all planned as one PD back in 2000 or something like that?
That's correct. So, that, Section 8.3 of the, this is the problem when I put cool animations in my presentations. That Section 8.3 that was in the, in the, this was in the Fifth Amended PD, but this same language has appeared in every Canyon South PD since it was originally approved. And so, the, I think, and I can't speak for the Board of County Commissioners from the early 2000s, the original vision was to allow these transfers of dwelling units. And I would actually add, Commissioner Thomas, just as a point of clarification, and we've spoken about this with staff, that although the practice has been to actually do PD amendments to memorialize these transfers, this PD is unique compared to some of the other ones that you have in the county. Other PDs in the county actually, you know, you would go through what the zoning resolution says, which is go through an administrative amendment to change the dwelling unit counts in a planning area. This PD would actually technically allow these dwelling unit transfers to occur by plat. But it's sort of been the practice with this PD that amendments have been approved to memorialize the transfer of these dwelling units. Sorry, that was a bunch of gobbledygook, but hopefully it was clear.
I understand what's going on here now, so thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Further questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'm not really sure whether, Mr. Connolly, you want to take this, or staff wants to take this. But I mean, as you mentioned, I am actually very familiar with annexation regulations in a municipality. So, three steps to a municipal annexation by a home real municipality in the state of Colorado. Have either one of those steps been considered, presented to the council, or adopted by the Castle Rock Council?
If you're referencing the three steps as being so analogous state for the benefit of the public that might be listening, I think the three steps you're referencing are the three step, the three Town Council steps in the process.
Correct.
So, before those happen, a landowner has the right to file a petition for annexation to an adjoining municipality. So, Low Residential as the owner of the red property on my map, because they adjoining Castle Rock have the right to file that petition. The first step is a resolution of substantial compliance that the Town Council would need to find that the petition itself complied with state law. The second step is the eligibility hearing to determine if the land itself is eligible under state statute for annexation into Castle Rock. And the third would be the Town Council's determination as to whether to actually annex the property. So, that last step is the discretionary step. It's my understanding that the first two steps have occurred, that the Town Council has found that the petition complies with state statute and has found that the land itself is eligible for annexation. But to be clear, those first two steps don't mean anything. I mean, they mean something legally, but they don't mean anything in terms of the Town Council's actual decision as to whether to annex the property. That final discretionary step has not yet occurred, and I do not know when that is scheduled to occur.
Yeah, and then just for, again, for the public, the second step actually involves, does it comply with the Town Charter?
In Castle Rock, that is correct. I've actually processed an annexation in Castle Rock. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, well, I really appreciate the presentation and understand the language here in 8.3. I guess I'm struck somewhat by the correspondence from Mr. Patel and some of the other referral comments that we received, specifically indicating that this will turn into 1,441 dwelling units over the exact same 2,043 acres. Is that inaccurate?
I don't know whether it's accurate or not because I don't, I think, A, the assumption that Castle Rock will actually annex this property is pure speculation at this point. I don't know what Castle Rock will ultimately zone, if they annex the southern portion of the property, I don't know what they will ultimately zone the property for. But the result would, I mean, if Castle Rock were to annex the property and zone it for whatever number of units Mr. Patel says that they would zone it for, then it would, it would change the overall density of this property. But again, that's not a decision that's within the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners or us as the owner of the blue property. That's a decision that's in the discretion of the town.
Right, but I'm reading this 8.3, and the language is, "The overall density and the total number of dwelling units permitted with any individual residential planning area may be increased by a transfer of dwelling units up to a maximum of 1.2x." So, unless my math is way off, that seems like far more than 1.2x.
Are you referring to the 1,441?
Right.
So, again, I mean, what the effect of annexation would be, would be to sever that, the red property from the Canyon South PD. So, even though, I mean, all the recorded documents would still show that portion of the property, ultimately, that's no longer within the county's jurisdiction, so it's no longer part of the Canyon South PD. So, the, whatever number he's basing that 1,441 on, if that's the number of dwelling units that Castle Rock would approve, those would, those would not really be, they would not technically be part of the Canyon South PD because they would not be within the county's jurisdiction.
Well, and again, I think the conclusion he reaches is that, the quote is, "It seems like this is being done specifically to circumnavigate the original development plan and ultimately violate the agreement."
I understand what he says, and I, the, you know, phrase bait and switch has been used here. There is no bait and switch here. This is, what this is, is Heinz has the right to transfer these dwelling units around the PD, and whatever Castle Rock does with the southern portion of the property is their jurisdiction. And so, again, I would, I would say to someone like Mr. Patel, if he's concerned about additional density on anywhere on this property, the place to best direct his concerns is to the Town of Castle Rock.
Right, and I, you held up a graphic that showed that whether or not we approve or disapprove today's application, that ultimately, it's within the purview of Town of Castle Rock when we think about density. Am I understanding that right?
That's right.
So, why bring a major amendment to us if it doesn't matter what we say?
Well, what would matter is if Castle Rock were to, so when Heinz purchased the blue property on the map, part of that arrangement was Heinz, Low also ceded its rights to the dwelling units that were permitted under the plan development. So, if the plan development, if the plan development were severed and 80 units remained on that southern portion of the property, Heinz would not have received the benefit of its bargain. And the reason it made that deal was because it saw that transfer of dwelling units provisioned in the PD.
Right, but it seems like the purview of Castle Rock is determinative.
Explain what you mean by that.
Well, it just seems like ultimately, if you're asking for an increase in density, that's not going to be a decision that we reach today. That will ultimately be a result of annexation.
And we are not asking for an increase in density. We are asking that this PD remain 968 units and that 80 of those units that are located on the red property be located in the blue property, which we believe is permitted by the language of Section 8.3.
Well, let me ask council then, so in your review of the packet and with regard to this particular provision, I mean, obviously, the applicant is making an argument around reliance. I think we heard that fairly clearly. Counsel, are you able to opine at all on that provision 8.3 and whether that, the comments made by the applicant are accurate? and whether the comments made by the applicant are accurate?
Well, I think accurate is up for the board to decide. I think the easiest way to do that is to look at the approval criteria. I think the applicant has made a case how they believe they meet those approval criteria, but ultimately, that is your call. And so I think determining whether 8.3, as interpreted by the applicant, meets the criteria, that's really the crux of the decision in front of you. The easy part is you have the criteria to consider. The hard part is to determine if they're met. So I don't have 8.3 in front of me. I had pulled up the approval criteria anticipating some questions.
Do you want me to go back to 8.3?
Brian, can you read 8.3? How long is it?
Not very long. "So long as the maximum number of 968 dwelling units for the entire development plan is not exceeded, the overall density and the total number of dwelling units permitted within any individual residential planning area may be increased by the transfer of dwelling units up to a maximum of 1.2x the total number of dwelling units specified on the development plan for that planning area." Go ahead.
So Commissioner, if you can accept the applicant's interpretation and you believe that it also meets the approval criteria, I don't think it's inherently unreasonable. I don't think it's the only interpretation of that criteria, but I think it's a reasonable one being offered. If you were to determine that that maximum 1.2 was somehow violated because of previous amendments, I think that could also be a reasonable interpretation. But I would focus on the approval criteria. I think it's the simplest way for you to meet your obligations and meet due process. There are elements in the approval criteria that can help you or at least can define how you would interpret this. For example, 520.02, whether the amendment is consistent with the intent, efficient development, and preservation of the entire planned development. I think that's a critical interpretation of, does the applicant's interpretation meet that intent? There are similar approval criteria, but the bottom line is the same. It becomes, how do you apply the facts to that and reach a conclusion?
Well, I appreciate that, and that's a bit where I was stuck as well is under that 520, let's see, oh, where is the intent?
1520.02.
1520 point, there it is, 02. Whether it's consistent with the intent, and I'm wrestling with whether it is or not, but counsel makes the argument that somehow that Provision 8.3 requires us to approve this application. I mean, is that consistent with your argument, Mr. Connolly?
Our position, so, and just maybe to provide a little bit more context to what Mr. Ingalls just told you, you know, like I said, one of the reasons I went through the background of this application is we came before staff requesting an administrative amendment because we looked at the language. Heinz looked at the language when it purchased the property. They brought it to me when this application, when this transfer came up, looked at the language and said, "Well, the language is clear, right, that you can do a 20% or 1.2x dwelling unit transfer." Staff went about processing an administrative amendment, and staff came to the conclusion that because this particular application would result in more than 20% change to planning areas based on the board's last approval in 2008, staff determined that this should go back to the Planning Commission and the board as a major amendment. And so I think, you know, what Mr. Ingalls just told you, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, is the argument that we are positing is that the Section 8.3 does in fact give the applicant the right to transfer these dwelling units. What staff's interpretation is, if I can paraphrase it accurately, is the applicant, the owner of the property, it wasn't Heinz at the time, had the right to do these 1.2x dwelling unit transfers. But once you get up to 1.2x, then that would still require a major amendment, which is why we're back in front of you today. And I'm not going to quarrel with staff's interpretation. I, staff has good reasons for wanting to bring matters like this before the board. But at the same time, we do have an applicant that purchased property that, with a PD on it, that says very clearly that those 1.2x dwelling unit transfers are permitted. And so when Mr. Murphy and his team were looking at this property as part of their due diligence, they read that provision and said, "Sure, we get to transfer dwelling units under that provision." I would offer to the board, if there is discomfort about that, that we would be willing to add language to Section 8.3 that would memorialize the staff interpretation, which is bring it back to the board once you hit 20%. If that would give the board more comfort about this not occurring in the future, where there's a disagreement over the interpretation of that Section 8.3, I think we could use this PD amendment to add some clarifying language around that.
Well, Mr. Connolly, as always, you're brilliant from a legal perspective, and I think providing options for us to think about this in a measured way is certainly helpful. So thank you for that. I think that's consistent with our history with you. Certainly, you're not making the argument that the permission to transfer is somehow absolute.
I think we are making the argument that it's a right of the applicant, that the applicant purchased the property subject to that provision.
But not if it's more than a 20% change, right?
Correct. An individual amendment could not be done that exceeded 20%. I'm not making that argument.
So it's not an absolute. It's, under that criteria, if that issue arose, certainly that would create some challenges.
So, you know, maybe to put a little finer point on the staff interpretation, which differs from ours, is staff's concern, I'm just going to go back to that language because I think it's helpful to have it up in front of us as we're talking about it. I can also go back to the approval criteria if you'd like at some point. Staff's concern, which I think is understandable, right, is if you have an applicant that continues to do 1.2x dwelling unit changes, transfers, that could ultimately blow up the entire PD, right? And that, taken to that extreme, which I don't think we're doing, but taken to that extreme, that would be a problem, which is one of the reasons why I've offered that we would be willing to add some language in this that would clarify that, because I do think, I think staff's, I don't agree with staff's interpretation, but I think it's a reasonable one. What we are trying to do is, again, vindicate a right that Heinz believed it had when it purchased this. I think any reasonable party conducting due diligence on a property, if they looked at the zoning document and it says, "You have the ability to do these 1.2x dwelling unit transfers," would say, "I have the ability to do a 1.2x dwelling unit transfer." Now, to your question about whether I'm here saying that, you know, you must approve it, obviously, we are respectfully requesting your approval of it. This has been brought before you as a major amendment. The approval criteria do need to be met. I'm happy to walk through the approval criteria, but what I think this is important, why this is important as it relates to the approval criteria, is this is the best evidence of intent. We lawyers know that what the law tells us is that intent is best determined based on the plain language of the document. And the plain language of this document says dwelling units can be transferred up to a maximum of 1.2x.
Well, thank you, Mr. Connolly. I'm certainly familiar with the four corners of the document rule or certainly the tradition, but no doubt, language is informed by context and other laws associated with any application that we review, including the legal criteria today. I appreciate your acknowledgement that we may have some discomfort if you exaggerate the hypothetical. I would step back and also say that Heinz is a phenomenal company. We really recognize the value of Heinz. We traditionally are a very easy county to do business within. We always say we're open for business, so we're really thankful that Heinz is here and appreciate your time with us here today. But again, I think you recognize the discomfort with seeing this as an absolute versus having some guardrails that could provide some comfort.
I do, and just, Commissioner, when staff, you know, identified this concern, one of our first reactions was, well, if we need to clarify this language, it seems that a major amendment is a great time to do it. And I think that that type of clarification would avoid the exact concern that I shared with you and that you just reiterated, which is you could do these so many times that you've ultimately thwarted the intent of the PD. And so we'd be happy to add that clarifying language.
I appreciate that, Brian. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? So I think, just as one commissioner, I certainly would appreciate accepting that concession for consideration. I will open it up for public comment, and we'll look forward to further discussion from the board, so maybe that's the appropriate time to do that. So if there are any further questions or comments for the staff or the applicant, I'll open it up for citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment on this Item 3D? Is there any online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have an online comment. This will be from Mr. Ed Hill. Go ahead, sir, you're unmuted.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ed Hill. That's H.I.L.L. I live at 3462 Alta Sierra Way, Castle Rock, 80108. I happen to, well, first of all, thank you, commissioners, for listening to me. And I happen to live next door to Mr. Patel. And I also attended the Planning Commission hearing back on March 7. And I was in agreement with Mr. Patel's letter. I sent my own letter as well. And I appreciated the Planning Commission listening to the public input. There was four or five of us in attendance. And they voted 7 to 1 to deny this request. I have just a couple of points I want to make, mainly to what Mr. Connolly stated. The first one is, is really a question. Why move the 80 units? It can only be inferred by any reasonable person that there does seem to be some kind of a clearing of this 400 southern acres, southern portion, to be able to, you know, make it easier, get compensation. I don't know what it is. I don't know what the logic is. But, you know, something for this potential town proposed annexation of this 400 acres. And before I bought this home, I did due diligence. I looked at the plans. You saw on the map there, the red portion, you could see where the proposed road and units were. There was only like 15 or 25 units very close to our houses. And, you know, we felt, my wife and I, that this was going to be, you know, livable. Well, now we're talking about if the annexation goes through by Castle Rock, which, by the way, we're attending those public hearings, it's in the middle of that, that there's looking to be by the Low developer, 474 units on 400 acres. So it's hard not to assume that there isn't a clearing here for potential annexation and then a lot more development. My second point I wanted to make quickly is, I just believe it clearly shows that moving these 80 units, and then I know it's not part of the, you know, the town annexation's a different thing, but you're going to have the same 968 units on a lot fewer acres. And I just think in the spirit of the planned development, and for people that looked at it years ago, that it just violates what was going to be expected. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Hill, thank you for joining us, and thank you for your comment. Is there any additional comment online?
I have no additional comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So at this point, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion.
If I could just ask one question. Did I just hear Mr. Hill say that this was going to put 968 units on less land? Because I don't think that's the case. If the applicant would like to respond to that, if I heard it right. Is that what you heard?
I did hear that, yes. And you are correct that that is not what would result from this amendment. It would still be 968 units on 2,043 acres. If you were to approve this amendment today, tomorrow we would wake up and there would be 968 units on 2,043 acres.
Thank you.
And let me make sure I give the applicant an opportunity to respond to anything else that was heard.
You know, I think, again, this is maybe what, and I, you know, I'll just say, this is maybe what tripped up the Planning Commission a little bit, is there's a concern about a proposal that is not before the county that might, if it is approved, again, that's pure speculation, if that application were approved, might result in the approval of additional dwelling units on the red or southern portion of the property. Those concerns are best directed to the Town of Castle Rock, because neither you nor we can do anything about that application. That is an application that's in progress and that the Town of Castle Rock has jurisdiction over to determine what to do with it. You know, again, you heard from Mr. Hill the same thing that we heard from the Planning Commission, which was the concern that this is the first step, right? This clears the decks. This is what needs to happen in order for Castle Rock to annex the property. That is not true. There is no requirement for any, we didn't need to come before the county for anything in order for Castle Rock to annex property that is adjacent to its territory that a property owner has petitioned for annexation on. So there is no clearing of the decks that is occurring as a result of this application. And commissioners, I would offer, I started handwriting some language that we would add to Section 8.3 if you were inclined to do that, and I'd be happy to work with Mr. Ingalls on determining how that might read.
Well, thank you, Mr. Connolly. Let's bring it back to the board for discussion to determine whether that would be necessary at this point.
I do have another question, just to make sure that I heard this right, that the purpose, the reason for doing this transfer is because it will be able to use infrastructure more efficiently. Is that correct?
It will do that. And in fact, again, what I would point out is, is one of the things that is a concern to Heinz, and quite frankly, should be a concern to anyone who's buying property in the McCanta Project today, is that if the 80 dwelling units that are currently allocated to the red portion of the property, if those become annexed into Castle Rock, they will be severed from both the PD and the Metro District. And so part of the reason for this request is to ensure that the financial assumptions on which the Metro District was originally approved, which is 968 units, to provide all the infrastructure and the open space and the trails and the amenities that this community will have, to ensure that the Metro District continues to have those 968 units and continues to have the assessed value on which its financial assumptions rest. If you take those 80 units out of that, I don't know what that means for the Metro District's finances, but I can assure you that it either means a longer period to repay the debt that's been issued already, which it has been issued, or it could mean potential mill levy increases in the future to service that debt.
Thank you. And as I have read through these seven approval criteria, it seems to me that these criteria are met. And when we're talking about the 8.3 change, it seems to me that's in 1520.01, where it talks about the overall intent of the planned development, that the purpose is to keep 968 units in that development and that amendment allows a 1.2 change in the planning areas. So it seems to me that it meets that criteria. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Well, you know, first and foremost, I want to say that I've learned to appreciate planning commissions in my time in elected office, and I really do rely on them to advise the board. And prior, when I was on the Castle Rock Council, thank you, counselor, for bringing that up again, you know, advising the council. But I think I have a fundamental disagreement with a couple of their findings, as reported by staff, specifically the 1520-04. Yeah, I can't treat a corporate entity as an individual. I'm sorry, that like goes straight to the core of a lot of fundamental beliefs that at least I bring to the board. And secondly, Secondly, I mean, I don't believe we're looking at a violation of Section 8.3. The reality is, it is Heinz property. Were we looking to bump density in the planning areas that we already have development in? And we already have homeowners that have bought, okay, I'd have a problem, guys. That would trip over a wire for me. But considering that we're looking to make those adjustments into areas that are not yet built out, that we don't actually have residents in, I'm willing to accept that these changes, I'm willing to accept the applicant's interpretation, that these changes are still consistent with 8.3. All of this is shaded by the fact that, actually, I'm not, I'd need to look at the timeline again to see how long you guys have been dealing with this. If you remember the 2015 date, that's how long I've been dealing with this development, just because I was on the Castle Rock Council when that decision was made to actually not annex the entire PD into Castle Rock. And I had my views that I expressed to my predecessor at the time. But I would ask everyone to remember the office that I served in at that time. When I do hear from Mr. Hill, when I hear from the individual who submitted the letter, I get it. I understand their concerns. The only problem is, I think we need to bear in mind that those are concerns that will be taken up by the Castle Rock Council. I mean, those will be their concerns. Having served on a municipal council for six and a half years, I am very reticent to step on their authority and step on their, you know, inherent rights as a municipality in the state of Colorado, particularly as a home rule municipality in the state of Colorado. So I do think the applicant has met the approval standards. I do agree with the interpretation of Section 8.3 in the plan development as proposed by the applicant. And quite frankly, I do then also support the Castle Rock Town Council and the people of Castle Rock in their ability to make determination of the development they wish to have in, within the confines of their town limits. And, you know, for the residents who have spoken out, who we heard from today and who've submitted letters, I do not wish to take away any power or authority from the people of Castle Rock. And I would ask them to please address their concerns to the representatives on the Town Council of Castle Rock, and then remind them that those representatives, annexation is a legislative item. It's not land use. And therefore, they deserve to have that conversation with their representative members on the Castle Rock Town Council. So I'm in favor of the application at this stage of the game and would be, of course, open hearing for my colleagues if they would prefer a motion.
Well, I think it helps to hear that perspective, and I want to stay within our lane. I also believe that the people of the Town of Castle Rock and their elected officials will ultimately have that purview to reach a determination on this application. I think it's still significant that we are here today because our staff determined this to be a major amendment because of the potential impact over 20%. So I actually did appreciate the concession made by Mr. Connolly. And I think for purposes of appropriate guardrails consistent with what we heard from our citizens and what was being offered, I certainly would accept that proposed language from Mr. Connolly as part of a condition today.
It has been offered.
So if it pleases the board, I wonder if Mr. Connolly would be open to providing some potential language?
What I would suggest, Commissioner Layden, is maybe we take a five-minute recess so I can share what I've written up in chicken scratch with your legal counsel, and then we can present that to you after a recess.
Okay. How does the board feel about that?
I support.
I'm okay with that, but I don't need that condition added.
I'm also happy to read it into the record if you would prefer.
No, I think a five-minute recess has been productive in the past with councils, so let's go ahead and do that.
And Commissioners, before you take that recess, Mr. DeBoer was suggesting you could move forward with your budget item, which is still on your agenda. I'm happy to step outside and look at the language that Mr. Connolly is suggesting, but you don't need a recess unless you want one.
That is an outstanding idea. And I've seen the wonderful Kim Hirsch and our Budget Department in the back waiting patiently for us. So why don't we do that? If it's okay with the applicant, if we can continue this item, and we'll move on with item 3D, I'm sorry, 3E in our agenda, which is the resolution supplementing the 2022 adopted budget for the County of Douglas, Colorado, to appropriate committed fund balances in the amount of $9,666,970 for the reappropriation of prior year purchase orders. Louis Lowe, financial analyst for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. You guys had a long day, so.
So have you sitting in the back.
Hopefully, you will need counsel for this. In any case, it's Louis Lowe representing budget. It's my privilege to present the first supplemental for the 2022 budget. The request for consideration is $9,666,970. It represents purchase orders incurred in 2021 but were not fulfilled. Specifically, the request is for the board to approve the reappropriating of funds that were appropriated in the preceding year that were not purchased in 2021. Each year, the Budget Department works with county departments and elected officials to identify purchase orders that are no longer needed to prevent any unnecessary reappropriation in subsequent year. We monitor how long the POs have been open and encourage departments to close POs that are older than one year. That being said, we do recognize that some of these projects span multiple years and require reappropriating remaining balances for several years. In event the PO is in the general fund, is reappropriated in subsequent year and then closed, the Budget Department will require those funds to be moved into contingency so that departments do not inappropriately increase their spending authority. Regarding the other funds, we don't necessarily have that approach, primarily because those funds are for specific reasons. In summary, the total request for today is $9,666,970, which represents a 1.9 increase of the 2022 adopted budget. With today's supplemental approval, the new amended budget for Douglas County will be $521,372,932. This supplemental request is governed by Statute 29-1-109 that will allow the Board of County Commissioners to make revised appropriation resolutions that will reflect the increase in the expenditures. The packet provided in the agenda item is for the board's review and has the detail of the open purchase orders, along with the department explanations for the POs that have been open for over a year. In addition to the detailed fund summaries that were impacted are also included in the packet. With that, I conclude the presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Louis. Any questions for Louis?
I have none. Nice job.
Thanks.
You sounded a little nervous. It's okay.
I did. I was drinking water before. I didn't expect my beer to...
You did a nice job. Thank you.
Commissioner Teal, any questions?
No questions. Good job, Louis. That's a lot of work to, a lot of POs to sit through, so I appreciate it.
A lot of it was with staff, so thank you.
I just got used to saying we have a $511 million budgets, and I've got to adjust that to be accurate. But I don't have any additional questions. Let me go ahead and open it up for any citizen comment. Do we have any citizen comment, either in person or online?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution supplementing the 2022 adopted budget for the County of Douglas, Colorado, to appropriate committed fund balances in the amount of $9,666,970 for the reappropriation of prior year purchase orders.
Second.
There's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Thanks so much. And with that, we will move back to item 3D, if the applicant is prepared.
Yes, again, Brian Connolly for the applicant. When we left this matter, we were discussing a potential offer of a, whoops, Heather, you employ my presentation backup. It may be better to have the language in front of us. We were discussing an offer that we had made to add language to Section 8.3, the transfer of dwelling units provision in the Canyon South PD that would limit successive amendments that increased dwelling units in any given planning area by more than 1.2x. What I'm going to do on the suggestion of your legal counsel is read the proposed amended language into the record. And then I will supply this sheet of paper to staff, and if we need to make any technical corrections before the PD is recorded, we will do that. What I would propose is that at the end of the red, underlined, bolded sentence, that we add the following language, as follows. "Except that any amendment or series of successive amendments that would result in exceeding 1.2x the number of dwelling units approved under the last preceding major amendment in any given planning area shall be brought before the county as a major amendment to the plan development."
That's exceptional, Brian, from my perspective. And I think that's consistent with 1503.02 and satisfies my issues with regard to intent. Other comments or thoughts from the board?
So as a matter of procedure, then, when we make a motion to approve this, is that going to be a third condition? Or do our conditions remain the same? If you accept that language as part of the application as submitted, so a commitment made on the record, I don't believe you need to amend your proposed written conditions further. Okay, okay. So then, how does that get, help me understand how that gets enshrined moving forward then?
So one, I mean, interrupt. Do you want to respond to that question? Okay. Here you go to the conditions, so it's the language of the condition. Yeah, I think what Heather is pulling up is the existing conditions that are included, I think, in your proposed motion is that all commitments and promises made by the applicant become part of the approval. And so what we will do, we will work with Mr. Cunningham to make sure that that language that I just read is placed into Section 8.3 of the plan development prior to recordation. And if there are any grammatical errors or anything like that, we will make those corrections before it gets recorded.
And staff will have an opportunity to make sure the change is made per your decision.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, I will accept a motion.
If it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve Canyon South Plan Development Seventh Amendment with two conditions as presented project file ZR 2022-003.
Second.
There's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations, and thanks for being with us.
Thanks, guys.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.